I'll ask a question. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes are hereby approved. We have a couple of people that wish to speak on items that are not on the agenda this evening. Just a couple of housekeeping items. Just keep your, try and keep it within six minutes. If you get to that timeframe, I'll probably give you about a thirty-second hand wave to let you know you're coming up on your time. We do like to keep the quorum in the council good, so anyone else that's not speaking, please refrain from making comments. And as you are called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. First on the list is Ms. Cassandra Knudsen.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Knudsen. My address is 696 James Avenue, Lake Elmo, Minnesota. Thank you for allowing public comment today. I wanted to talk about the Lake Elmo Elementary School project. I will start by just sharing a little bit more about myself. I have a background in communications. I work for state government right now. Been in state government since 2020, and I worked at the school district in South Washington County before that. And so in those administrative positions, I'm very well aware that government agencies collaborate together all the time on a variety of projects, right? This was especially clear during the COVID pandemic, which is something that I helped out the response on. And there's a certain level of partnership that you need to have between cities, between schools, between state agencies and federal government to work together on projects of all scopes, big projects, small projects. When I've been following the Lake Elmo Elementary School project, I've noticed a lack of public partnership on this front, and I think that moving forward, it's going to be important for the city to put a better front of support for the school district that's within their boundaries. So just to reiterate, Lake Elmo Elementary has been a part of our community for more than a hundred years and serves hundreds of students every day. In November, I'll remind you all that the community successfully passed a bond to keep the school within Lake Elmo. It was announced that it would be at the site that was proposed on 10th and Lake Elmo Avenue in August. Signage went up in September. Community meetings were held in October and November. I know because I was at those meetings. The need for a new school is abundantly clear. They've been at capacity, and enrollment is expected to grow, which we all know and have experienced as living in Minnesota's fastest-growing city. The building itself has been there for more than a hundred years and has been expanded on over that time. It has significant deferred maintenance needs. Additionally, the traditional style of the building is outdated and needs to be updated to meet the needs of today's learners. The gymnasium and the cafeteria are undersized for the student population. There's no flexible learning spaces, which means one-on-one help is happening in the hallways for math and reading. There's also limited spaces for specialists. The need is there. The community has overwhelmingly supported it. I mean, it was two to one in our precincts, in our two Lake Elmo precincts for the school at that site. The importance of the school is clear, and I think the school district has made it known. They've also made it clear in the public that they're willing to look outside of the city of Lake Elmo. For me, my kids are going to go to that school if it's in Lake Elmo or West Lakeland or wherever it is. I think it's important for our community as a Lake Elmo resident to keep the school that's been in our community for a hundred years. So I hope that you all consider that as it comes up before you in the future. You think about the needs of our students and how important it is. You think about the growth of the city and all of that is happening around us, and that the future of Lake Elmo is on the line. And do we want to have the school as a part of our community moving forward like it has been for decades? And that is all I will say on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knudsen.
Thank you.
One more person would like to speak. Lindsay Magnuson.
Good evening, and thank you for your attention. My name is Lindsay Magnuson. I live at 3047 Klondike Avenue North in Lake Elmo. And I'm here to just reiterate what Ms. Strand said about the importance of approving, making possible the new Lake Elmo Elementary School in our town. I have a four-year-old son, and he will spend his entire elementary education at whatever the new Lake Elmo Elementary School is or wherever it is. So this is really important to me and to my family. And I'd just like to say that when I first heard about this location, I was just driving down Lake Elmo Boulevard, and I saw this huge billboard that said, "Future Site of Lake Elmo Elementary School if the levy is passed." So I voted for it, as did many people. And I think it's something like seventy percent of voters voted for the levy, knowing that this site, which was widely advertised on this very busy corner, would be the site. So I feel like it's, might be a little unjust this late in the game to then not approve that site, knowing that so many voters believe that this would be the place where our new school would be for our community. I also know that this city has approved development of hundreds of new single-family homes in the last five to ten years. So I feel like it's important for this council to support the institutions that are needed to educate the children of those new families who have moved into those homes and are paying taxes in our community. And I also know that the city has many times rezoned different parts of the town to accommodate business and commercial interests and new residential neighborhoods. Living on Klondike Avenue for the last two and a half years, I haven't been able to access many roads because there are constantly new sewers and new water lines being put in. So I know that's possible, and I think that is what the barrier is for this new school. So I'm sure something as important as a school for our children can be accommodated by this council. And I just would like us to not be known as a community that has approved numerous new developments and rezoning applications for commercial and business interests. But when it comes to the education of our children and our youth, we draw a line there. I hope we can maintain an elementary school in Lake Elmo, and I look forward to our children learning and growing there. So thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Magnuson. Okay. What? No. There's somebody that signed up to speak on an agenda item. We do not have any presentations this evening.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. There was an emailed public comment that I printed and put at your...
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this, but this is on an agenda item.
Okay, my mistake. Just wanted to make sure you got that.
Yep. Thank you for double-checking on that. Consent agenda this evening is number two, approved payments and disbursements. Number three, approved plans and specifications. Order the improvements and order advertisement for bids for the Stillwater Boulevard, saw fourteen trunk-water main improvements, resolution 2024-021. Number four is approved pay request. Number six for the 2023 street improvements. Number five is approved RFP for a farming lease. Number six is approved zoning text amendment to 105.12.260 and 105.08.100 ordinance 2024-05, resolution 2024-022. Number seven is approve the First Amendment to the Eberts Addition Development Agreement, resolution 2024-023. With that, I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. I'll ask the question. All those in favor approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is hereby approved. On our regular agenda, we have, number eight is the At Home Apartments Preliminary Platte and PUD, resolution 2024-024. Mr. First will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am pulling up a presentation here. So this evening, we are looking at the At Home Apartments proposal for preliminary plat and planned unit development in the village planning area. So up on the screen, you can see the two parcels that this development would occur on. This is a preliminary plat and planned unit development request. Getting into the land use analysis briefly, the site is just over seven acres, seven, at seven and a half. There are no wetlands that we're aware of on the site. The comprehensive plan guides this particular parcel for village mixed use, and it has the same zoning district. The PUD would amend the zoning to allow for some flexibility that we'll talk about. The proposal here is for forty-eight attached single-family units. These are townhomes or twin homes. These are single-family units. So I've switched to the, you can see the future land use map on this slide, and I'll move on to the site plan here. So you can see this, the site over those two parcels is broken up with a number of different buildings. There's fourteen of them broken into two-unit structures, four-unit structures, and one six-unit structure. So when we look at planned unit developments, we look at first and foremost, do they meet those minimum criteria? And do they meet the city's identified objectives? And it does appear that this development both meets the minimum criteria and the city's identified objectives in the city code. Looking at the preliminary plat review, we've looked through a number of different standards. This includes land use, as we've discussed here, bulk standards, tree preservation and landscaping, grading, stormwater, wetland impacts, public infrastructure that's required in the standards for those things, and parkland dedication. In addition, we're looking at a flexibility request here specifically for this land use. We're seeing multiple buildings proposed on two different lots. And so first and foremost, this PUD is needed to approve those multiple structures, multiple principal uses on two lots. The other request for flexibility by the applicant is for landscaping or screening flexibility more specifically, and we'll talk about that in more detail as well. So up on the screen, this is the preliminary plat. And I think most importantly here is you can see there are two, two different lots that are proposed, calling them Block One and Block Two. And then there is an outlaw that would be for stormwater management, which would manage the stormwater for both lots. So in a review of the city's bulk standards, there do not appear to be issues based on the proposed locations of the structures on the site. And moving into the design standards review, we've looked at site design and building design requirements in the city's design standards manual. And these, these requirements on the site talk about building placement, the streetscaping that's proposed, landscaping, and parking, and where the parking is located. The development generally appears to be consistent with the city's design standards manual for site design. And additionally, for building design, you can see up on the screen, this is an example of the elevation for the six-unit building. The applicant is using some variety in the facade. And then you can see on this slide here, there, the four and two-unit buildings also show some variety. Overall, these are consistent and compatible with each other, all the buildings on the site, and they appear to be generally conforming with the standards for building design. So just a little bit on parkland dedication. The city has reviewed for parkland dedication, and in this case, cash-in lieu of land is, is recommended by staff and the city's parks commission. This property is not located within a search area for a neighborhood park, so cash-in lieu is the preferred option. So this project was reviewed twice at the city's planning commission, once in December of last year, and then again in January of this year. And between the December and January, January review, the planning commission did ask for some more information on traffic impacts from this particular project. And so the applicant did provide a trip generation study for this proposal. So in some weekday total trips throughout, for all forty-eight units throughout the entire day, would be predicted to have three hundred and forty-six trips total going in and out. And in the peak hours, we're looking at, in the AM peak, twenty-three trips, and in the PM peak, twenty-seven. So that's just over two minutes between trips during an hour. Moving on to tree preservation, the applicant and their team were able to identify some of those trees they're able to save on the site. The landscape architect will need to review some revised resubmittals, but by and large, the development does meet the city's requirements for tree preservation. On the screen, you'll see the landscaping plan that was most recently submitted by the applicant. This is, this addresses one of the kind of most discussed or most important parts of the planning commission's discussion. The commission was very concerned with the screening from this project to those single-family residential areas to the north. And the applicant has been fairly responsive in, in terms of working with those residents that are abutting this proposed project and providing a proposal that has landscaping and sort of an enhanced landscaping plan, if you will, that demonstrates some, some additional screening with vegetation. So the, the city's landscape architect will need to review some finalized plans if a conditional approval is made. But generally speaking, the landscaping does appear to meet the city's ordinance, and the planning commission did recommend a deviation if needed to screening, which has been put in the PUD ordinance that's in your packet. And the screening would be subject to the landscaping plan here, so the, the trees would be required to get installed as they're shown. And one last view of this, so you can see a cross-section that was submitted by the applicant's team. And you can see that at the time of the development, there would be a pretty decent amount of screening. And then as, as time moves on with those plantings growing, the, the screening would be nearly, nearly complete. So in, in, in terms of how they're able to make this change, really, the, the key thing here was the redesign of the cul-de-sacs. So the applicant did reduce the width of the cul-de-sac in this development from thirty-two feet, from curb face to curb face, to twenty-eight feet, which had a corresponding right-of-way reduction from sixty-six to sixty. That meant that they had an additional six feet to play with on the north and the east side of their Block Two. And so they were able to fit in more tree plantings and address an easement issue that we had identified through our review. And so that easement issue was with a stormwater, storm sewer line, and specifically over that, centered over that storm sewer is required to be in, in easement of a certain width, fifteen feet. And the, the patios shown on the, the six-unit building were encroaching into that required easement. So we had some options at that point. One was to decrease the front yard setback and allow the building to move a little bit further to the west, or the city could reduce the easement width in that storm sewer area. Ultimately, staff between the planning commission meeting and today have determined that it's most appropriate to reduce that easement width by four feet to accommodate the storm sewer, reduce the, or remove the encroachment of the patios, and not necessitate a front yard setback. So long story short, we've found a solution that we're proposing to you. That's option number two on the screen. Some other staff comments from the city engineer, there will be revised plans required after a conditional approval if the city moves that way. We have found, we believe, a solution to the encroachment issue here. And I would additionally point out that the developer was required to propose a sidewalk connection north of this development connecting to the existing terminus of a sidewalk on Wildflower Drive. The city's fire chief has commented that the reduced street width becomes more palatable with, with sprinkled structures to reduce the concerns regarding fire safety or emergency access for emergencies. So when we reduce the street width, we do go from two-to-one side parking, and the diagram on the screen shows you that you'll have some on-street parking on the north side of the cul-de-sac on, on the first block, and parking on the south side of the cul-de-sac on the second block. Staff are proposing sixteen conditions of approval if the city council moves to approve this item. One of those importantly is the satisfaction of those review memos that have been put in the staff report. Additionally, we have some standard conditions, which include agreements, fees, permits, et cetera, being required. And then a couple of unique conditions, which again relate to the sprinkling of those buildings, but also construction of a necessary turn lane at Wildflower and Thirty-Ninth. So just acknowledging the water appropriations issue and staff's recommendation to treat applications consistently. Lastly, a, a public hearing was held on this item at the December eleventh meeting, and some public testimony was received at the January planning commission meeting. And generally speaking, comments from the public have been concerning the screening and the tree mitigation on the site. The road width was mentioned at one of the meetings, and generally, there, there doesn't seem to be opposition to the actual land use here. Some of the elements of the site were, were what folks were concerned with. So that brings me to my recommendation. We have three items that we're looking for you to make a decision on. If you're going to approve the item, adopting resolution 2024-024, and then the ordinance and resolution below on the screen would be what we recommend. So with that, the applicant is here this evening and happy to speak to their application. Happy to stand for questions if you have any for me.
Any questions for Nathan? Yes, Councilmember Hearn.
We could just dig into the, I think it was, I gotta see whose memo it was. From Jack. At the bottom in his findings, where he talks about, I think it's number one. So revise the landscape plans to remove all conflicts with stormwater pond maintenance, access routes, and emergency overflow pathways. Some encroach, conflicts remain. So my concern with that is, does that mean the, the landscape plan that we're seeing in the presentation tonight could be drastically different once those are corrected?
So I guess, I, Jack can speak to his comment, and then we can maybe talk to, talk about what the order of operations here is from what we've received. So the engineering comment memo, I'll just say, came in before we received the resubmittal for the landscaping. One of the things that I, I was trying to identify to the applicant's team was, you know, especially with, like on, we'll call it Block Two, the eastern property line where we have that storm sewer, making sure that we don't have tree plantings literally on, on this storm sewer line. So with that, I defer to Jack.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Hearn, that's a pretty standard comment you'll see in all my review memos, and it's usually landscape plans are put together long after the civil plans. And so the landscape architect for the developers will usually just populate trees just about everywhere there's open space. So it's a, it's a direction that I provide for them in their plan preparation to make sure that they're aware of our, of, of our offsets from storm sewer pipes, making sure they're not planting trees on, on areas that have been dedicated for access to the maintenance ponds and things like that. So those areas are all called out on the, and, and at the end of the day, we require the civil site plans and the landscape plans to be married so that we can do that review and make sure that those spaces are, are reserved. So it's a pretty standard comment, and we do that with all of our plan reviews and just try to get those plans to be coordinated.
Okay, perfect. And then, so I guess just to review then, the memo from the landscaping then. Because I think there was a similar. Screening should be amended to include fencing or additional evergreen plantings. Again, elevations, cross-sections will be required. So again, with the memo that we received from the landscaping, are there any concerns from that then that there may be changes? So after Jack's comment and then the landscaping gets it, again, as I read through it, it sounds like there's maybe some concerns that what was presented may not actually be possible.
Yep, Councilmember, that, that is a good question. So what happened here is we had the landscape architect's memo provided to us that we, we circulated to the, the developer, and then we, specifically at the planning commission in December identified, you know, a very specific concern with the screening on Block Two to the north. And so that is what the applicant really focused their attention on correcting and addressing. And so we did receive some updated submittals that really focused on that area, but we hadn't received all the different cross-sections, and that would be ultimately required by the landscape architect's memo. And so the, the memo still reads as though we were looking for enhanced, or some, some type of screening on that north property line of Block Two, which staff feel that that particular issue had been addressed between the December and January planning commission meeting dates. So the, the PUD ordinance that's in your packet would approve a planting plan. That's what we have in front of us this evening. And that's specifically just to give the flexibility for screening in that area.
And just for the visual, the, that visual that you put up of at planting, I think it was like ten years down the road, that was depicting what is on the landscape plan that's in the PUD for tonight?
Correct. So yep, we're specifically looking at that Block Two, which again, that's the eastern, eastern parcel. And then if I go to the elevations here, you'll see again that this correlates with the, I'll call it the enhanced planting plan that we received between the planning commission meetings. And it does show that, you know, over time, the, the screening would become considerably greater.
Cool. Thanks for the clarity on that.
Yeah.
Other questions? Councilmember Holtz?
Sidewalk going north, south along Wildflower, is, there would be an HOA for this development, correct?
This development, that is a good question, would actually be owned by At Home Apartments, and it would be rented. So it would be more of a rental situation owned by one property owner.
So At Home will be, then be the entity responsible for the sidewalk?
They'll be responsible for the sidewalk abutting their property. We did get this question at the planning commission meeting about the maintenance of the stretch of sidewalk between the northern property boundary of this development and where it currently terminates along Wildflower Drive. That portion, my understanding, is that, that, that portion would be maintained by the city of Lake Elmo.
And then for the twenty-seven trees that still need to be replaced, are those taken into account on what's here? Or are those still to be determined?
So those plantings that are required to get replaced are detailed in the landscape planting plan. So my understanding is that we actually have more trees that are proposed, I'm sorry to try to bring up the planting plan. We have more trees proposed that are required for the site in terms of both the city's requirements and for landscaping and tree preservation.
I'm sorry, which, which piece of sidewalk did you say would be responsible to the city of Lake Elmo?
Yep. I will find that. I have a diagram here. So on this screen with staff comments, you can see there's a stretch. This is an inset that shows the northern property boundary in that dashed line. And so there would be a stretch of sidewalk that's required to complete a currently non-existing connection into that Wildflower neighborhood where the sidewalk currently terminates. Does that make sense to you?
To me, that creates an issue, but...
I'm just trying to phrase with the twenty-seven. I, I don't want, you know, some of the boulevard trees that are required anyways to essentially be ones that are coming from replacement trees. But if they already are above what is required, are they, can you go back to the numbers? How many above are they?
Yep, let me go back there. So of the landscaping required, we have a hundred and thirty-six trees. This is broken down between street trees, which are in the front yards of these units, and then buffer trees, which are shown on surrounding the, the development. And so the total landscaping provided on the bottom there is a hundred and eighty-seven trees. So about fifty more than are required.
Because I just had a probably very dumb idea, but in terms of if some of the extras, if we were to ask the property owners on the western parcel on the north side, here's, because we can't plant in their yard. It's their yard. I understand these are trees on this parcel, but it's a very valid concern. But obviously, we, we see the other visual of what it looks like ten years from now. It's just a, if we were ever to consider that, to offer some of those replacement trees to other property owners for them to use as they please. But I don't think we've ever done that before, but just throwing that out there as a idea.
Question, Director Powers. Do we see any issues related to sidewalk extending up to the crossing north of this development as being maintained by the city?
Being an issue?
Well, currently, we don't not plow.
Trails?
Trails, sidewalks. Trails, sidewalks, things of that nature. And I could see this in the future being put in. And if this is in quote unquote no man's land and it's responsible to the city, I was getting requested to clear that.
Correct.
And currently we don't do that currently. And even if you write it up, that the city's not going to plow or whatever, that would be the expectation of residents going down the road. I'm just wondering what the, we already have a trail on the west side of the roadway.
Correct.
I'm just wondering the nature of why we, I guess I just don't know why we need, have another sidewalk on the other side necessarily. Could somebody explain that to me?
So it's, it's not out of line to have a sidewalk on one side of a street and a trail on the other. It does allow for wintertime travel. And if that, that top section would be city-owned, we have other areas not too far away that we clear sidewalks with a piece of equipment. So I don't see it being a problem.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two four approving the preliminary plat and PUD requested by At Home Apartments LLC for Lake Elmo Townhomes based on the findings of fact and conditions therein.
Oh, wait a minute, I am so sorry.
Oh, we got it.
Yes. A little premature dereliction of duties on my part. We do have somebody that would like to speak on this item. Again, if you were here earlier, just trying to keep the comments within six minutes. Keep decorum in the, in the council chambers. When I call your name to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Don Place.
Good evening, I'm Don Place. I live at four zero one zero Monarch Lane in Lake Elmo and Wildflower, actually. And, and even though my address is Monarch Lane, my house actually runs along Sunflower, which is the street on the northern border of Block Two that has been a lot of conversation on. And I'm going to say basically the same thing I said at the Planning Commission. I'd like to start out with a big thank you to the team from At Home Apartments. They connected with us early on and we had a chance, all of us that are living along Sunflower, that's, that's who I'm representing now, are the residents along Sunflower, expressed our concern about the screening or barrier, if you will, between our houses and the development. And at the time, the plan was to remove all of the trees except for three, I think, on the eastern moors, most part of their block number two lot. In going around with everything, we learned that shrinking the street with, in, within the development from thirty-two to twenty-eight would provide a lot more space, allow them to shift the building locations. And the number of trees saved would go from five to about eight. And then there would be a lot more space to plant trees. Leon has actually promised to plant some that are a little larger than normal of what they'd plant to give us our desired screening. We didn't really want a fence. We wanted the natural vegetative screening. And it looks like that's what we're going to get. We really thank At Home Apartments and staff for working with them to come up with the solution to narrow the street with, we hope, Planning Council Commission went along with it, we hope you will as well. And I hope, Jeff, you weren't suggesting that we might borrow some trees from that and put them someplace else, really, we're really looking forward. The picture that you saw on the screen looked like it was 200 yards away from the buildings. We're about 20 or 25 yards away from the buildings. So it's going to be very, very, very close and the addition to as many trees as possible is what we would love to see. The other comment I wanted to make had to do with the sidewalk, which you just discussed. On the west side of Wildflower, of course, there is a Batumis, I guess you call that a trail, that has never been plowed by anybody. And while we don't need much plowing this year, last year to get downtown, we walked down the street. Next year, if we get snow, if the concrete sidewalk, which I, I think Mr. Powers and company would consider maintaining, needs to be plowed, otherwise we're going to be walking down the street. And it's not just the Wildflower people, not just the Sunflower people that do that. We walk downtown constantly as do the neighbors to our west. And in the wintertime, when there, everything is piled up, the snow is piled up on either side of the street, we need to walk in the street. That maintained plowed sidewalk, the concrete sidewalk on the east side is really, really important and we hope the city will help maintain that for us. And those are our comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two four approving the preliminary plat and PUD requested by At Home Apartments LLC for Lake Elmo Townhomes based on the findings of fact and conditions therein.
Is there a second?
Hold second.
Motion is second for resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two four, discussion?
I can kick it off here. Yes. With, uh, thank you, Don, for that comment. That's really great to hear developers and the community working together. That's always, it makes me feel so much better hearing that as well, cause I know a lot of times there isn't that communication, so appreciate that. When I was reviewing this, I think just like everybody else, the screening was obviously a big concern. I know it's something we've talked about for quite, for the last several years and have made some good improvements. I agree that, and it's great to hear the clarity tonight of the changes that have been made, because I definitely was very concerned when I initially saw all those trees being taken out, the talk of a fence. I think that would have really taken away from the character of the area. So it's really good to hear that there was able to be the coordination to, to make it work and where everybody could be satisfied with it. The, thanks for the, the visual as well, that is very helpful to be able to see, cause sometimes when you just see it on a piece of paper, it's difficult to know what that might look like. Now, I know it's not real life, but it still gives us a better look. So I do appreciate that. Those were, I guess, my comments on it. Again, I just, I like the coordination that went into this project between the developer and the, the community, that's really good to hear.
Thank you.
Clarifying question, this might be for staff or others, where that sidewalk stretch is, that is on current city land that we're talking about?
Be in the, correct the, in the cities right of way.
Why can't we just extend the parcel for that specific stretch? It's not a land swap, it's not swapping. Why can't we just have it be a part of this at plat? And that is the responsibility of At Home to take care of the sidewalk all the way to the connection and have the parcel end there? Makes it into a very skinny panhandle.
Yeah. I think just to, I mean, from my perspective, that, that is a challenge because it would be, it's plotted right of way, so the city would have to go through a vacation process to vacate that, which can get complicated. So I think just procedurally, that's probably the reason that that wasn't suggested.
I guess from my comments, I'll echo Councilmember Hearn's, it's, it's nice to hear that a developer listens to the adjoining community and works with staff to, to try and do the best they can and, and I'm planning on supporting this resolution.
I have absolutely nothing original to add to those comments, so I agree with you both.
Yes.
Likewise.
Okay. Fantastic.
We're just not smart, we're, we're.
All those, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is, resolution is adopted. Can I get a motion on the ordinance, please?
Move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero six approving the PUD ordinance for the development proposed at At Home Apartments, subject to the approval of a final plat and PUD.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero six. I'm going to assume, maybe incorrectly so, that discussion has been made in the previous resolution, so I'm going to call the question unless somebody objects. All those in favor of adopting ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two five approving the summary publication of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Call the question, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two five approving the summary publication of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All have passed. Next on our agenda is approved water system study findings, recommendations and next steps, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Want to apologize in advance, there's a lot of information here, so we'll try to go through this slowly and I'll stop at different times for questions. We're trying to, trying to summarize a lot of research that's gone into these three different studies. So on September fifth, as you may recall, the council authorized the study of putting treatment on well two for, for the PFAS contamination. So that's one study that I'm bringing the findings and recommendations to you tonight. At the same time, we were looking at redoing and revising our master water supply plan, which started with wells in the north and looking at, since the wells are, the new wells are being prohibited by the White Bear Lake issue, we're looking to move the wells to a different location in the city. And that required us to look at our water distribution modeling system and how, how that would be impacted. And that was authorized on, on September fifth as well. And then on October seventeenth, we authorized a review of looking at a south water treatment plant for those future wells to be located in the growth area in the north. And then the last thing I'll want to touch on tonight is just to look at our, as we're moving toward our capital improvement planning and updating that for the 2025 year cycle moving forward, looking for direction on the council on the neighborhood connections to city waters. We, we took a pause last year on that, so I want to touch on that at the end. So starting with the well number two treatment for PFAS, basically, this is the summary of the findings that we, that we looked at, so just kind of going high level. We, we are looking at the capacity of well two, what it brings to our water demands. And we are identifying that we do need well two to be operating in the summer on peak demands. So I know, I know, talking to Public Works Director Powers, that we minimize the use of well two to the extent possible, but it just can't be minimized in summer. There's times when it has to run in order to keep the tanks full and keep, keep the city in water. So we did verify that that's, that's necessary. Looking at treatment options, we've identified that providing temporary treatment for PFAS is feasible. We do have some options to look at for that. I use the word temporary because it's something, what we're, what we're looking for is at a minimum, being able to treat those wells until we can get a, the treatment plant in the south and the next well up and operating. Permanent treatment at well number two is also possible, but I can't tell you, I can't stand before you here tonight and say it is feasible. And why that is, is because to do treatment for PFAS, we do need to do pre-treatment and, and we need to take the iron and manganese out in order to make it a real feasible, long-term option. What we're going to be proposing here tonight is a use of a pressure cartridge filter in the system to take out the iron and manganese. And to get in, without getting into too many details, there's, there's still permitting acceptance, back and forth going on with the regulatory agencies of whether they approve that design. They have approved the design on temporary basis, they haven't yet approved it on a permanent basis. So talking to our designers and our, our consultants, we think it's a, it could be a long-term viable option, we just can't stand here before you today and say it is.
Has anyone applied for it yet for permanent?
Not for permanent.
Cogged Grove and Woodbury are both GAC?
They're GAC and yeah, they're not using the, the IX.
I'm sorry, can I just, one on that, is it not being approved for permanent because of it hasn't been proved effective yet or any specific reason they are not approving it for permanent?
Yeah, it gets into whether the iron or manganese is soluble or insoluble and gets it, so gets into these kinds of details. Our treatment plant designer has approached them and said, I think I can put an inline aerator in there, make it a soluble, take it out, take it out in higher quantities. They're looking at him and saying, yeah, I think you're right, I think that'll work, but you got to prove it to me. So it's, it's that kind of, they're at that level of detail of bantering between treatment technologies.
Okay.
And the reason why it's feasible temporarily is because then the medium has to be hauled out?
Yeah, it, because it does work, it just clogs up so quickly that you're replacing those cartridges too frequently. But if you can, but if you can get it to work on a permanent basis where it has a much more, much more longevity in its operation, then it would be allowable. So, so it does work, it does treat the water, it just becomes too operationally intensive and cost-intensive right now without a, a better solution. The other, so we did look at GAC filters, we found that to not be feasible. We're limited by the building footprint. The GAC filters for the same treatment capacity, the IX treatment is, requires a smaller footprint. So we'll get into why, so we're looking at IX treatment at well number two because we can utilize the existing building footprint that's there. And the GAC filter treatment for the same capacity requires a larger footprint. It also requires more waste and it has a more demand on a sewer, wanting a sewer system to be present. So we ruled out GAC filters for that.
Jack, would, would the GAC filters reduce the PFAS to the acceptable level? That's been the subject of some debate.
Yeah, my understanding is both GAC and IX is taking PFAS down to, to essentially zero. They're not recording it. The debate that's going on right now is the testing gets better and better and better. In other words, they're getting it down to lower levels, so I'm going to get into those specifics. I'm not exactly sure where the science is yet at this point, but it is essentially taking it out.
Thank you.
It's more a matter of how frequently you're having to replenish or replace the medium.
Okay. Thank you.
The other option we looked at that we'll talk about a little bit tonight is a prefabricated trailer-mounted system. There are a couple of systems that are out there that are available. So we were looking at this from, because we wanted to have something online in 2024 for, for being able to operate your well. There's two systems, the Evoqua and the water surplus, they have different capacities. So your, your well number two is an 800 GPM well. You know, the, the one Evoqua is only a 450 GPM filter, so they're pre-mounted, they're already built, they're already on a trailer, you pull the trailer in, you hook it up and you can start, you can start treating. You know, they want $260,000 for the initial mobilization startup and get it up and operating. They want 15,000 a month rental. And then they want demobilization and they want to rent it for a minimum of six months or they don't want to, or they don't want to do it. Water surplus is a little higher capacity, little lower initial costs, a little higher operating costs, and they're looking for a two-year rental rate is what they're giving the 27,000. We're, I'm, I'm, I'm standing before you and this is a tough thing to recommend, but I'm looking at recommending that we don't do a prefabricated mounted system this summer, that we continue well number two at minimal use, but whatever we have to use it for in 2024. And we focus on the system that I'll be recommending here in a second and have it ready by 2025. And part of that reason is, is because we want to, in order to have the, the right system ready in 2025, we need access to the site, we need to rehab the well, we need to put, you know, redo the aquifer, redo a well pump, we need to start working on building modifications. And if we put a trailer-mounted system in there for six months, we can't, we don't have enough room to work on the site as well. So we're really off limits for another six months and it delays six months of working on the more permanent solution. But it is something we can, we can discuss. So with that, I'll, I'll move on to the recommendations of what we are recommending. We are recommending that we proceed, proceed with the design phase engineering for an IX treatment at well two. we proceed, proceed with the design phase engineering for an I X treatment at well two, it's basically bringing in a eight-foot diameter, two eight-foot diameter pressure steel valves, or steel pressure valves that will get, move into the existing building footprint, and it ha, we do have to take the roof off and raise the roof because those filters are fifteen feet tall, so that's really the only thing we have to do is move the building roof up, as far as the, the main for the modifications. Pre-treatment is required, as I mentioned, the solution we are presenting there is a pressure cartridge filter for iron and manganese, that, as I mentioned before, that has been approved in Cottage Grove and, and Minnesota by the Department of Health for temporary treatment. The, the question, as we put this system in place, is whether there's some opportunity that this system could last us thirty years once we do this, but that has a lot to do with this pre-treatment being approved by the Department of Health long-term. So what we'd be recommending as we move forward with the design of this treatment plant, with that pressure cartridge filter, we would move right away to start meeting with the MPCA to secure a grant agreement amendment to do the design phase engineering services, so we have grants in place for these projects, in discussions with the MPCA, we wouldn't get new grants, we would just keep amending the existing grants, so we'd amend it for design services, we go to construction, we amend it for construction costs and so forth, and we just keep amending the grant as we move through the process, so we, we first want to secure that amendment and then start our team on the design. We also want to do sampling and detailed testing for well two, that, that, there's a lot of testing that we need to do in addition to, for the treatment designers to refine and detail their processes. We want to also proceed on this project with a direct procurement of the treatment vessels, so we would end up designing a project, doing building modifications and having a treatment plant that we would contract out with a contractor, as you're familiar with, we'd bring plans and specifications, approve those, go out to bids, have a contractor build that, but we'd also be simultaneously designing those pressure vessels, and we'd go to direct procurement, we would just buy those directly, hand them to our contractor for install, and the reason we do that is to accelerate the delivery, the project delivery process, to get those vessels ordered immediately instead of waiting for that design bid process. So as I mentioned before, our, our recommendation is to operate well two on an emergency basis only in peak twenty-four demands, rather than try to mess around with the trailer-mounted filters, there's a chance, you know, get any delay in that process, we may not even have that up and operating in time, and then it just kind of gets in the way of, of moving forward as fast as we can on the more permanent solution. We'd also be looking to initiate the building modifications as early as this summer in preparation of the pre-treatment, and we'd be looking, as soon as Public Works Director Powers can tell me he's through the peak demands for twenty four, twenty four two, for twenty twenty four, we'd want to take the well out of commission and begin doing maintenance work on your well and pump replacement, so that that's in place for the treatment facility when it's ready. So a little bit more about the details, the treatment capacity for the system we're recommending is eight hundred GPM, which matches your, your top capacity of that well right now that we're, we're seeing, it is, that capacity is also limited, those eight-foot diameter vessels is the biggest we can fit in the, the existing footprint, and those two, that pair of eight, eight-foot diameter vessels limits that GPM to eight hundred. The, the goal for the schedule of project is to be online by the spring of twenty twenty five. The cost of putting treatment on this system is estimated right now at two point four million, all equipment is purchased, it's not rented, whereas all those trailer-mounted systems and the other option we looked at was a skid-mounted system, and they were all, all the equipment's rented, and you rent it at those thirty thousand dollars a month rate, and when you're done with it, somebody else owns that equipment. The s, expected life of the media between replacement needs to be refined through detailed testing of, of what you have at that well, but it's estimated you'd be replacing the media every two to four years, and that costs is, at a cost of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand every time you go in there and replace that media from an operational cost standpoint.
Roy, that, just a question, just, uh, the media replacement, seems like that's a pretty, you think they'd have that a little more dialed in than two to four years, what, what, what are the variables involved in that?
It, it all has to do with the, it's other parameters in the water, not just the PFAS concentrations that end up clogging the media up and, or binding the media in different ways, so it, every, I, I was trying to get a, a, I agree with you, I was trying to get a more dialed-in number, and they just don't want to give you one without doing a pilot study or doing some more detailed testing.
So that, that number beyond the, the first time it has to be redone, that, that could be refined when some of the studies on the water gets done?
Yeah, by the time your treatment plant's designed, you might, you, you'll have a better estimate of what that is, and that has to do with whether, there's another decision point here when we get to the, not for this one, but when we get to the south treatment plant of whether we want to do a pilot study or not, and the pilot study has its own set of expenses, and it also will delay the delivery of your treatment plant by six to nine months, but it has the potential of really making your system more efficient in, in the long run, too, and from right out of the gate.
Jack, as we get down the road and start looking at what those other contaminants are, contents in the water might be that would affect the life of the media, would it be possible to perhaps look at, on that present value analysis of taking those out to extend the life of the media?
I'm sorry, the-
Well, the life of the media is dependent on everything that's in the water.
Yes.
And so you, let's maybe you find iridium in the water, just making something up.
Yeah.
And so there would potentially be an analysis, say, is there another way to get rid of that to extend the life of the media, and what's the net present value of those alternatives?
Yeah, especially when we start talking about the south treatment plant, which is gonna be a much more robust project, that's the kind of stuff they definitely do with this temporary treatment, we're more on an expedited-
Okay.
-schedule, and, and the schedule's really gonna be your number one driver-
Okay.
-rather than your refinement for efficiency, but at the end of the day, what you will have here is something, these, these tanks will be steel, your building up there is a decent building, you're gonna be putting a new roof on it, so once it is in place, there's an opportunity here to keep well two and not abandon it, you know, once the new treatment plant comes on, comes online.
Is the media exchange something our city staff would do, or would that be contracted out?
It's, it's usually contracted out, and because we don't have wastewater disposal up there, it's, part of the reason the expense here is because we have to, we're basically renting in big steel tanks, setting them in your parking lot where everything gets disposed into and filtered out, and then you're pumping it into tanker trucks, and you're driving it down, and you're discharging it to the Met Council system, since you don't have a sanitary sewer system up there, so that is one of the disadvantages of this location without the sanitary sewer.
Thank you for that explanation, it's very helpful.
So then, the expected service life of that steel equipment and everything could be up to twenty-plus few, uh, years with, you know, painting and refurbishing the steel tanks every twenty years, things like that, so there is, there is some value in, in what you do have up there once it's put in place, and like I said, I, I see the big driver is how well that cartridge filter performs on the pre-treatment as to how viable this becomes that far into the future. So the, and, and that was, that's really the point of, of number seven, so we're calling it a temporary, temporary treatment facility, but permanent, turning it into a permanent facility does have potential. Just real quick, building modifications include process piping, fittings, valves, meters, remove, what you did have up there when that well went into place was not just a wellhouse, but a hydromantic tank went in place there, and you had an interior generator, and that's why you have this added space that you can fit this facility, so it's really just kind of a knockout wall that comes out between the two generator, the generator room and the new hydromantic tank room, you're putting in unit heaters, revision of access doors, the biggest, the biggest change is removing the roof and raising that up and putting a sixteen-foot garage door for being able to get those tanks in and out. There'll be some minor chemical feed, equipment modifications, some modifications to your electrical controls, replacement of a backup generator, so the whole system is on backup power, and then, as I mentioned, rehabilitation of the well and the well pump to maximize the efficiency of your pumping capacity on that. So this is just a real quick photo of the, you can see the aerial, you can see the pump room, that top, uh, let's see if that area, this top area is what, is normally just a pump house, but this particular pump house had this added, these added rooms, which you see in this bigger building, you've got a hydromantic tank that's been out of operation for years, that's not even being used, so they're just gonna pull that out, and then there's an old generator, it used to be an interior generator that was pulled out, and you have an exterior generator, so that's where the, the added space comes in, that you can just drop this equipment in here. So this becomes the two rooms right here, this is a system we're not recommending, this is a shorter system that, eight filters on a skid-mounted, this was a rental unit that we evaluated, it really came into the same cost through rental fees over thirty-six months, and then the equipment's gone, and it had a lower, only a six hundred and fifty GPM capacity, so this was one alternative that we reviewed and rejected, and then this is the one we're recommending to you where it's two eight-foot diameter pressure filters, they kind of look like this, this is a, a photo of the Cottage Grove facility, I think it's the exact same tanks that we're talking about, they fit in the room quite nicely, once you raise the roof, and then just have to do the piping and valving mechanisms to and from the filters. So with that, that's my summary of the well two treatment study. Is there questions at this time, or should I just continue on?
I think I asked my questions, the real thing for me was explained okay, anybody else have questions?
Nope.
If we were to get eight hundred gallons per minute out of this well, would we be able to decommission well number five in order to get out the White Bear Lake five-mile limit?
No. Well, well number four and well number five are central wells that are running at twelve hundred GPM each, that are running quite a bit of the time, and well two is, and it's, it's another point, if you ever have to do take well four or well five offline for operation, even if it's just for a day for maintenance or something like that, well two becomes that much more essential to have available.
Okay.
Councilmember Holtz? If the council asked you to do the recommendation that you didn't want and did the rental trailers there for two years, obviously you'd mentioned it takes up the space that you're wanting to use to put in the I X filters, how much, would that then extend the, the timeline for even being able to do that, or is it just making it not possible because you're overlapping the space?
Yeah, so first let me clarify, there's two different rentals I touched on, but I touched on them very briefly, so, so this rental would be in lieu of doing the other one, and this would be, this is a skid-mounted system that we can get up and operating quicker, but I don't think we would get it probably until like August, or might be missing peak demands already this summer, it's equivalent in cost, it's, I think the other cost was two, it's two point four million versus this one's two point two million, and it's a three-year rental, and so if you did this system, you would put this system in place, and this is all you would do until the South Water Treatment Plant is up and operating, and then you return these rentals and you're done, and well two is done for good.
And either way, it's not until August anyway, what about the other rental?
Right, the other rental is trailer-mounted, so that's like a, a semi-truck type of trailer that you pull in and you put it in the parking lot, and then you run hoses to it that connect everything up, and you run your, your flows through there, and you put treatment on it, so you would be able to handle whenever you are using it during peak summer in twenty twenty four, you would have treated water at that point, what it does is it delays us being able to start working on the improvements for something longer range, and so we might miss the twenty twenty five summer demands, you know, might not have everything ready by some, summer of twenty twenty five.
The rental for the tr, this, the one that'd be outside on a trailer, that was a minimum of a couple years anyways, correct?
One of, one of them was, I, I don't know how negotiable that is, but that was, they gave us a twenty-seven thousand dollar a month rental rate based on a two-year contract.
Thank you.
You know, what we really need, what we really need in twenty twenty four is like two months' worth of, of pumping, not six months, not twenty-four months. So, moving on to our, basically our revised water master supply plan, what we did is, this is a map showing basically up in the northern part of the city, we have well two, well four, well five, those are our production wells, and our twenty forty comp plan shows that we need at least two more wells, so we call them six and seven, and the design was to put them up in the north part of the city because the water's clean, and we didn't, we didn't need to treat, we weren't anticipating treating, because the contamination was all down in this part of the city, but with the five-mile radius, which is about right here, that made this sort of prohibitive, and then we also, with the hits of PFAS and well two, that kind of also gave us a scare of, maybe they aren't clean, and maybe they aren't clean permanently, so we basically said, let's turn our attention to treating the next two wells. The other, when you think about water distribution systems, each one of these yellow dots and the red dots, they're wells or water towers, these three are water towers, the rest of these are wells, they're really points of energy into the system, so you have water under pressure pushing water to the homes and to the point of use, and that's what feeds your, feeds your faucets, feeds your showers, feeds, feeds the use every time it turns on, and what you like to see, I think I moved that, what you like to see is you do like to see them distrib, distributed around your city in different locations, if they all come into one point, then you need bigger pipes to push the water out, so really that's what this whole exercise was, is as you start to move those points of input into your system, how does your system respond to that, and where do you now have pressure problems and deficiencies, and what other improvements might you have to do in terms of pipe sizes? In general, what we learned is by taking those two wells and moving them to one point out of a treatment plant, so this is the capacity of two wells, but coming out of one treatment plant in this location, and these colors are your pressure zone, so this is your high-pressure zone, which does a good job of feeding water to your different, to the lower zones, the system works really well, we don't see a lot of deficiencies, we don't see a lot of changes in, in needs of your system from a distribution standpoint, we right now have a booster pump that pumps water from this zone uphill into this zone, so we would need a pressure reduction valve so we can allow water to move both ways, but once we do that, we'll have a, our, our, we found our system responds pretty, pretty well to moving the water back and forth, and, and having a, a south water treatment plant in the high-pressure zone actually works really well. This is the result that I'm seeing, I'm not gonna go into this in too much detail or see, but I, I've received basically a screen from this from our modeler for every option that we analyzed, and so option A one, this is, this is basically a water treatment plant at Stonegate Park, and what they've done is they basically said, these are the improvements you need to make initially to make this system work, and it's really build a water treatment plant and a well, put a pressure valve at the booster station area, and then put this trunk main in, which is the Stillwater Boulevard that you just approved the design for, for construction this summer, so we're already doing that, we're, we're already moving ahead and have grant dollars to do that, so that, so that was the main improvement that was identified as, as needed, and, and we're already moving forward to that. The orange section basically does the model looking at your twenty forty demand, so they've loaded it up based on your, your twenty forty comp plan, and what additional improvements would you need moving forward, and it really just identified additional wells as you need, as you need more capacity, and then making adjustments to your, some pressure valve systems in here, and making this connection between Keats and Lake Elmo Avenue, so that, that's needed by the twenty forty year, and then the yellow improvements that are shown on here are already in your master water supply plan, and they basically just build as your city grows out, and those usually get built by developers as development occurs. So, the bottom line is, we found that this system really works well, and it doesn't, outside of the water treatment plant, we're really just putting a pressure valve in, is the only new addition we need to do compared to what we were doing before. A two is really this, just a variant of A one, and if you look up here, you'll see well four and well five are separate wells, so this option is your new wells, six and seven, working on a treatment plant in the south, and wells four and five are pumping into your system in that- And wells four and five are pumping into your system in that location. Um, given the lower standards and things like that, I'm waiting for the other foot to drop where we're going to find out we need to treat water at four and five. So all this one is looking at is what if we have to build a water treatment plant at Tanner Ridge Park and put well four and five into that? Does, is there, um, and there is a little bit of pipe upgrade that we need to do in that area, but it's not a lot. In general, in general, we found that that system works really well too. So showing that we have a a good flexible system, um, and we're not going to be having to do any dramatic, dramatic changes to that. I I'm going to skip through, you know, option B, option C one, which we found to not work well. Um, but I wanted to show you this one because this was also a pleasant surprise with the um, someday we're we're going to be forced to look at St. Paul Regional Water. So we looked at uh plugging St. Paul Regional Water and having it connect from Oakdale up here by the Public Works Facility. And that doesn't work for our system very well at all. It's a lot of a hundred percent of our demand coming in at one point doesn't distribute very well. Um, but C two is looking at it coming in down here by Water Tower Four in our high pressure zone. And that that works really well. So that that um, you will see there's an extra water main that we have to, dedicated water main, we have to build between the two towers. So if we would, if if we're working with the state to to take St. Paul Regional Water, we'd be looking for grant money to probably pay for that distribution line. Um, but with this one additional redundant distribution line um connecting water under here um seems to work pretty good. And then um, option three is bringing water, St. Paul Regional Water into the same location. But we have this divide at about the UP Railroad. Um, we could actually close the valves and operate a separate southern water system and a separate northern water system. So we could continue to use wells two, four and five up north in a separate water system and buy water for St. Paul for just the South Water System. And that worked really well. So um, what it, what it does is because buying water from St. Paul Regional Water is expensive, this gives us an option of just buying half of our supply for for instance, um, instead of buying all of it and continuing to use some of our production wells or some of our infrastructure. So if and when we get to that day where we have to tank St. Paul Regional Water, we we now know what where the best place is to connect. And we now know we have the option that we don't have to go all in on day one and buy that water. The other options we looked at were blending the water supply where we still use some of our wells, but then you have to go to a centralized blending station be um, because you're mixing the waters instead of separating your water systems. And we couldn't find a good option for that to work, so.
Can you go back a couple of slides to when there would be a potential filter by well four that? Could, if there was a northern treatment plant, could it also be for well two on a permanent basis as well? Or is that too far?
We, we didn't look at that. I I'm thinking we probably could, and that's something we could refine and look at in the future. I, we don't know that we can't, um, so we look at it. But well two was kind of a lower capacity well as well, so.
And I guess the leading question for that is because I also have a interest of maximizing our new wells in the south for capacity and seeing if that allows us enough room to get rid of well four. And then you would have that treatment plant up there for two and five and we just ditched four. But if you can't connect it to well two, you wouldn't build a, build that just for well five. But being able to have it for two wells would make it somewhat worthwhile, so.
Um, the prob- yeah, the the problem, um, eventually replacing well four could happen, but I don't see how it could happen until at least the South Water Treatment Plant and well six is up and operating. So it's kind of.
Yes, not anytime soon.
A distant reach.
Yes, but that, I mean, there were still, that's in the five to ten year.
Yeah.
Ten to fifteen, well, tenish.
Right.
Ten plus. And it might be after the East Metro Water.
The better solution would be as soon as you build that water treatment plant. I mean, one, one option is to start bu- building that at more of a twenty forty capacity and make it available for three wells right out of the gate. And then you could start to entertain ideas of of uh taking well four out of operation.
And throw this on for size, as we know, there's PFAS in well two and four and five are nearby. And there's no rational reason why it's at detectable levels in two, but not the others, given where we know the plume is. Would there be a value to instead doing temporary IX at two to just start looking at a treatment plant up there for whether it's two or three wells?
Permanent treatment plant four. Um, I, yeah, I kind of think we're, I kind of think this option where we have a treatment plant for four and five is going to be required. So um, but in my head, what the way I played this out is if we build, we need temporary treatment on two right away. And if we build what we're building, that might be all we need on two for a long time. And so then we could just focus a treatment plant on four and five separately. We don't need to combine them.
Has there been any feedback from our grantee, granters, granters about using, in this case, trailers and doing something else and doing, like, has there been feedback to say, no, just choose one path, that's it?
There is none. I I've, I've not interacted with our grantors. So I wanted to bring this back to the council and get council feedback. Um, and our immediate next step with whatever feedback you give us is to go to them, get them some of these details, start answering questions for them and get grant amendments in place to keep the, keep the projects moving.
Because in that hypothetical, obviously of the multiple choices here, we would be asking for grant dollars for the rental fees for the two years.
Yes.
So if, we're still not using our utility water fund for it. Okay, I digress, all right.
We're, we're, we're going to be asking for grant money for the well two treatment, whether it's rental, whether it's permanent. We'd be asking for uh grant money for the media replacement for the first twenty years, just like everybody else is getting, but it is just for the first twenty years right now.
And with the blending, the possible blending of river and aquifer water, was the issue that water chemistry or was the issue the engineering?
The issue is uh difficult bringing all the sources together in one location. Um, you know, because you've got to, you can't feed right into the system where they are. You've got to do raw water mines across the city from and bring them all to one location. And then a hundred percent of your demand is starting there and trying to spread back out to the city. So it's a, it's a lot of pipe upgrading, a lot of pipes that need to be built.
In an area that's the county park.
That's part of the reason you see some of the costs coming in from Woodbury so high is their piping.
So again, it wouldn't be, uh, it's, it's, I shouldn't be standing here saying things aren't feasible. Anything's feasible, we could, we could build a treatment plant on the moon.
We can always talk about cost benefit, though.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're looking at it, it doesn't seem like the right path to go down. When we have these other solutions, it seemed to work well.
Yep.
So I covered that. So the recommendations coming out of that study is what we were pretty pleasant. Um, we, it was, it was a pleasant uh to learn how flexible our distribution system that we have in place right now is. And it seems to be pretty amenable to a lot of different things. And we're not really committing too much to um, by moving in one direction, we're not having to go build, rebuild a lot of it. Um, so my recommendations on this one is to adopt the revised water system plan uh to co- to construct and operate a system wide water supply delivery system with North Wells and South Water Treatment Plant. That's kind of the path we went down. It seems to be a viable alternative and it it and it allows us to focus our attention now to looking at the South Water Treatment Plant and well six in that high pressure zone. Um, instead of trying to build six and seven up in the five mile radius that we've been trying to do before. So it's really just confirmed that we can move forward with that plan. Um, and then I I have a second recommendation here, and that is because of what's going on with the PFAS, um, HBL levels and EPA levels and the the hits that we got in well two, uh, it might just be a matter of time before we get hits in well four or five. So um, just w- being, recognizing to be cognizant that we got to keep working very closely with the state officials and Department of Health and monitor those wells and be ready to actually have to move as soon as we know that we got an issue there on a water treatment plant in Tanner Ridge Park, um, and bringing four and five together and treat it there.
Question on that. So if that does happen and we have to act quickly and and move on that, how quickly is quickly? Is that a a three year process? Is it a?
It's probably a two or three year process, yeah.
Um, so the diff- the diff- distance between four and five is how great?
I'm sorry?
The distance between well four and five is how great?
Uh, it's about a quarter mile.
You'd be basically just taking a direct twelve or sixteen inch line and putting between them or wherever down to the park.
Yeah, we'd be taking a raw water line down Fiftieth Street from well four and then down Tanner Ridge into, or find some easement area we can get down to Tanner Ridge Park.
Okay. And then also just for council's uh reminders, if uh the White Bear Lake Comprehensive Plan Group Plan is due in the summer of twenty twenty seven, hopefully for the uh winter of twenty twenty eight bonding session for the legislators, where we right now, we're kind of guessing, as Jack has alluded to, surface water solution for probably us, Oakdale, Woodbury maybe. And that would probably be a half dozen years after that. So the solutions that we're sitting here talking about have to work for the city and the growth in the city and the pressures that we need till, you know, thirty three, thirty four, somewhere in there.
Um, so that's.
Ten to fifteen years down the road.
Yeah, and that's if everything works right and the politics work. Yeah.
You're funny.
I know, yeah, don't talk to me about that.
Have we had any detection in four or five yet at any level? I literally don't know how that's possible when it somehow is to the east northeast of it.
There's a, there's a test that shows a number for four and five. Um, and it has a signification by it that basically says it's unreliable. Um, I'm not a testing expert to know what all that means, but I know that if it's, it kind of just means they found something, but they're not, they don't have a confidence in what they found and they can't measure it and they can't report it confidently.
A resident had asked a a question I said I was going to include in this discussion, but when the time comes for well six and seven, uh, there was concerns raised as to how the hydrology is studied in terms of making sure that when those are done, that it doesn't essentially dry up the aquifer, that it doesn't impact other people's private wells in a way that would be detrimental in terms of either moving the plume or um, causing their wells to dry up. I just, can you speak to that topic as to how the well approval process works?
Yeah, I mean, that's a general question that comes up with every well, no matter where you drill it. So there's, you know, there's aquifer, um, things that people will talk about as aquifer interference. If you put wells too close to each other and things like that. But um, wells have to be pretty close to each other where you, when you start to see that. I've been involved in this business for a long time. I, cities are drilling wells all over the place. You, you listen to Cottage Grove and Woodbury and they talk about well fields with nineteen wells in one general geographic location, and they have private wells nearby too. And they're, you know, they're, they're coexisting. So it's pretty common for a lot of wells to coexist in a general location. That's not to say that you don't have some kind of weird geological thing come up once in a while where there's some where there is some interference or some impact or um, someone who maybe had a really shallow well has to drop their pump down deeper or something like that because, because a high capacity well came in close by them. So it it has been known to happen.
So what happens when you have a a well come in, there's a drawdown curve where the water cable drops in the vicinity of the well based on the pumping rate? And that's where the nearby private well, if it was shallow, could be affected by that if it was reasonably close. And the drawdown curve was certainly steep. Or no gradual in this case, right?
It's a very difficult thing to predict. You generally go through the sighting process for a well and that's, one of the things we start out with is a test well. And the reason to do a test well is you do the heavy pumping on the test well and you measure the drawdown and you start to get a sense for those impacts before you invest in the site.
If hypothetically that happened, well number six causes a a harm to a person a block away, what is the precedent for how that's remedied?
I've never had it happen to me personally with all the wells I've drilled. So I've um, I've had people nervous about it, no matter where we're drilling a well, but I've never seen it happen. So I I wouldn't say I know of a precedent.
Gotcha.
And also just for city residents, if you're watching the meeting tonight on the Lake Elmo website under Helpful Hint, Lake Elmo Water Topics, that's where we list the reports that come from the Department of Health concerning our um PFAS levels within our, within what what we get tested for, Marty uploads those.
Council member Hearn.
So with wells four and five, if we're monitoring those and it does come back and it's above the the um, the level, the acceptable level, options we'd have at that point is we could look, well, I guess the first one would be, if that doesn't happen until we have wells six and seven online, would we have enough water supply then where if we lost four or five, we would be okay without them temporarily?
Well, well, um, not, I'm, I'm assuming no, because I'm assuming in the next three years, we're going to continue to grow. And so you're going to need that, you're going to need three wells, not two. Um, if you have well six, and and we're talking about just starting with well six and a treatment plant and being expandable to well seven unless we start to drill two wells at the same time to to go into the treatment plant. Um, those are things we can talk about, but.
So we'd be in a situation where we'd have to do a trailer rental to have the water supply immediately then?
Yeah, it, I mean, it depends on what the hits are that you get at at the, at wells four and five.
Okay, because the blending.
Yeah.
Okay.
You might have time on wells four and five because I'm, I, if you do get hits, you're going to get very, very min- miniscule hits that are now only becoming an issue because of these standards have been lowered so so much.
And price wise on a permanent treatment plant for wells four and five, estimate on cost for that, what would we be looking at?
Um, well, I would assume that it would be close to what I'm about to present for well six and seven. So you're talking forty million type of thing. But you're, we're going to, we're heading back to the three M funds every time we hit treatment.
So that would be covered by?
It should be, yeah.
Okay.
The, the issue is we really can't do expenditures and spend time on designing this until those wells test at a level that they need to be traded. They, they won't approve our funding for this until we need it.
Okay.
They're not that proactive.
Yeah, if you wanted to be proactive and just start building them.
Okay.
If you want to be proactive and just start building them, you're paying for it yourself. If you wait till you, you, the hits are received, then you can.
And even if we wanted to um, do some pre-engineering and get some engine, you know, get some work done on this, they won't, you know, and we. They will prove that, they won't go back and pay for it.
And that's the route I was going down.
Yeah, you, you.
We can discuss it more.
We could spend a couple of million dollars on this just to get it really dialed in and never get that money back.
Sure, okay. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
Let's see, so um, so now moving on to the Southern Water Supply Plan where we're moving a a well, um, we're building a water treatment plant in well six um, out of the gate down south and and it'll eventually be expanded to well seven, maybe even well eight, um, going to this treatment plant. Um, so we're looking at the high pressure zone, which could be anywhere in the pink area. Um, is where our, our search is really being um dedicated to. Um, we did look, um, so this was Stonegate Park is where this um option is that we looked at. And then we also looked at areas um, at basically the Water Tower Four and south of four, between tenth and and four. And then we also looked at the Public Works Facility, um, because of the connection opportunity near the Water Tower. However, that is within the five mile radius, so we quickly eliminated the, the tower four or or the Public Works Facility site from consideration. Um, and our findings of looking at the water treatment plant is a, is a permanent water treatment plant in construction of well six at Stonegate Park is feasible. Um, the full use of the park for recreational purposes is essentially lost. We will need a lion's share of the, of the footprint of the park. Um, with the exception that the playground equipment up at the top of the hill could, could remain and coexist. Um, the advantages of the Stonegate Park is its location um in the growth area and then also um, the property is city owned. And it allows us to move forward with a a known site, um, has sewer and water available to it, has access. And it allows us to move forward with a, a known site, um has sewer and water available to it, has access. Um, and it's a, a large enough property to accommodate the treatment plant. We looked at a permanent water treatment plant and construction well six just north of tenth street in the Inwood subdivision, north of the Inwood subdivision, nor- on the north side of tenth street. Um, that's feasible and from an engineering standpoint, a, a pretty good site. It's not owned by the city, it's owned by a private developer, which makes that a, probably a difficult site to acquire. Um, and we would need to bring sanitary sewer to it, so it brings, so it creates an issue with comprehensive plan amendment, Musa Island, you know, those kinds of things. We do have the planning staff working with Met Council to look at um whether that actually is required. Um, and the preliminary word I got back is it would be, is you would have to do a comp plan amendment and uh rezone it from rad to public facilities in order to bring sewer across tenth street to it. Um, the Public Works Site, as I mentioned, is not feasible because it's within the five-mile radius, so it doesn't make any sense for us to do that. Um, the permanent treatment plant we would consider would be initial capacity of about three thousand to four thousand GPM. As I mentioned, we want to design it initially for two wells. Um, and we want to also make sure that the, when we design the site, that we have one wall that's removable, that we can mirror it and add more equipment for at least a third well. That would get us through the twenty forty planning period with adding, adding those three wells. Um, and that's without well two, so with well two, that would be a little bit of a bonus well if we're able to keep that online. I said, I, I, that's a typo, projected twenty twenty-four water supply demands. That's supposed to be twenty forty, um, but my apologies. Um, so that we'd be looking at two wells, expandable to three. There is some argument that could be made that you just build it for the three out of the gate and just build for your twenty forty demand. We do have a, another option that's being worked on by the MPCA with the multi-benefit aquifers. Um, so that's one reason why I would suggest we build it for two, expandable to three because that third well point source could come from the multi-benefit aquifer uh solution, which doesn't need to be treated. They would be, be already treating the PFAS and be feeding it into our water supply system at a different location. Um, and then obviously it's recommended the water treatment plant be designed to include pretreatment for iron and manganese. Pretreatment for iron and manganese in this more permanent solution is a much more robust operation. It's breaking, instead of doing it through pressure um systems, you're breaking it by gravity, doing it through tanks with clarifiers, adding chemical additions and settling out the iron and manganese. And then, and then sending that water to your filter systems. So the footprint of the building gets, gets much bigger. This is one of the more difficult content, things to contemplate, the pilot study. Our water treatment plant experts, of course, they want the best information available to them, so um, they, they have a hard time making recommendations. They keep saying they want a pilot study, they want a pilot study. So I asked them for the cost and duration for that and they told me it would cost about two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do. It would take six to nine months to complete, so that really in the midst of your, everything else you're doing, it really sets back your delivery date uh, of, of a three-year construction period of now being more closer to four years um to have that water treatment plant and well online. We do know that when you do the, the pretreatment for iron and manganese, that the IX media, so you've been hearing about GAC filters um for decades on this and the IX media, the technology is moving toward IX media as being the preferred treatment um media, even though most of the plants you're hearing about right now are GAC. So that's why um they are talking about it. It takes a smaller footprint and it seems to have greater treatment efficiency based on the studies that are being done um e- even in Cottage Grove. Um, so right now the leaning is toward we'd move forward probably for a treatment plant using the IX media. Um, and then just to give you a flavor of the design, we, if we, if we were able to go work with the MPCA and get a grant amendment uh together quickly for design authorization and we were able to do that at your April sixteenth council meeting, um, you know, with a thirty-six-month construction schedule, where the best-case scenario is having well six and a water treatment plant in line and ready and operating for your twenty twenty-seven peak water supply demands. Um, I don't, I don't think you'd be able to do anything quicker and this, this is using a, an accelerated project delivery schedule as well where you're pre- doing procurement, um, direct procurement for equipment and things like that that have long lead time.
Can you just speak on the pilot study? What what are they hoping to, to gather out of that?
They, they actually take the actual water source that you're going to treat, so they go to the well that you're talking about treating. So you gotta drill the well first and then you get sample the well. And then they take, they actually will set up miniature treatment plants at that well site and it's, so it's a down scaled model basically and actually run it through filters and take measurements and monitor it and um they do that for several months and then they're able to tweak exactly how to treat that water the most efficiently.
And if we didn't do the study, they're just taking a blind guess at what would be best?
Yeah, they're, they're using assumptions rather than the actual water quality that you're treating and they're assuming it based on other experience or you're gonna use their Cottage Grove experiences, their Woodbury experiences, things like that. Um, and there's a lot of similarities, so it's not, it's not bad, but um they're using that and then you don't know what you don't know.
Would the risk be that we don't know the level of contamination or would it be more on the the iron and manganese side where we just don't know the level of that and then we're actually replacing filters more often?
I think the bigger risk is the other constituents that may or may not be present.
Outside of PFAS?
Yeah.
Other contamin- like uh dangerous contaminants?
So if you don't do it, you're spending a lot more time in the initial operations of tweaking your plant and making adjustments and and maybe, maybe deciding you need to do some modifications to a brand-new water treatment plant to make it more efficient or something of that nature.
Okay.
Um, is that operational peak for twenty-seven include the time for the pilot study or not?
No, it did not. The thirty, I gave you the thirty-six-month schedule and then, yeah, the last sentence there, depending on commencement date in the pilot study um it'd be extended by another six to nine months.
Got it. It's like twenty-eight.
Yeah. Uh, and then I was given an opinion of probable cost for this treatment facility at forty-five million. That's total costs all in um including engineering, soft costs, site acquisition, things like that. A week ago it was thirty-six million. I'm afraid to ask them again. So I, I don't know how rough that is, but these are the numbers that we'll be presenting to the MPCA. Um, talking about we want to go down this path, we're gonna need forty-five million to build a plant, we're gonna need twenty years of operating and maintenance costs, just like everybody else. Um, and, you know, they would be amending our grant on that expectation that that's what they're gonna deliver for us.
Right. And then is that grant amendable to when actual bids come in for that work?
Yep. Yeah, you just keep amending it at every stage in the process.
They come back higher.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, okay, so I'm sorry, with the pilot study, did I understand what you said there is if we decided not to do the pilot study, we could get the project, we could get it's um running and operational earlier and if we find as it's running that maybe we aren't quite meeting the, the needs, we can still tweak and we can still make those corrections while it's operating.
Yeah.
Or do we have to do the pilot study first or we're just, you forever lose that? And you won't know that information, you can't make changes?
Right, and there's no right or wrong answer to that question. It's, uh, I've, a lot of water treatment plants, they, there is some operational tweaking that goes on and then, and then I guess that it's, it's a question of what is the problem that rears its head and how fixable is it?
Would it be? So, so let's say the, the problem did rear its head, it did not do a pilot study. Maybe saving or costing you more money in the long run. Um, at that point in time, would the cost to amend or update the treatment facility be, do you think that would also be covered by the three M settlement? Would that be amendable?
It's a, I, I would like to think it is, but yeah, that's the question we need to. I mean, everything's gonna be negotiable, a, a negotiation with the MPCA on that front. But it is likely that if it, if you don't do the pilot study and there isn't an efficiency issue, it is probably uh replacing media out.
Right.
Say every three years instead of every five years or something like that, so that you're um, and at some point after twenty years, the operation costs become the city's.
Yeah, Councilmember Dragicich.
I think we should do the pilot study. I think the six to nine month delay is.
Councilmember Dragicich, something, well, that's a discussion point. If you have a question, you ask questions. Discussions for motions.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, Marty, I have a question for you. Um, we, you used to get water from Oakdale, correct?
Correct.
You still have access or you still have a valve or a pipe?
Pipe is there, correct.
Yep. Um, during peak water demand, that would not be advisable just to bring in extra water during peak demand because you'd be mixing water. Uh, you'd have to separate into zones if you had to do that. I'm just trying to figure out if we run across four or five here, like, you know, we run across a problem during a peak water, can we back into this a little bit?
Um, mixing the water isn't necessarily ideal, but uh we could isolate some zones and and create a specific zone just for Oakdale's water.
Yeah. Is, do you think Oakdale will be amenable towards selling us water or are they in the same boat with the DNR as we are?
So we've reached out twice recently and haven't gotten an answer to that. I'm assuming they're in the same boat we are and probably are reluctant to give water to us.
Not enough water to float the boat.
Right. Councilmember Holtz?
So on three M settlement team, the co-trust, the co-trustees stated that they were setting aside money for Lake Elmo specifically to remedy the White Bear Lake situation. And I, I pull it up and, and they, they stated that there is money set aside for either two additional wells in Lake Elmo because of the White Bear Lake or three additional wells in Woodbury and an interconnect and that they would set aside the money that is whichever more costly, which was the interconnect. So I'm, when we're talking about well six and seven, are we talking about the wells themselves being paid for with grand dollars or just the treatment plant?
The ask is gonna be for everything.
Okay.
Um, but they do, you know, we ran into that problem before where they, they state, well, for instance, the wells are something you need based on growth and so those aren't reimbursable.
Cause I, the la- the language they have in there makes me curious as to if they're indicating that at a bare minimum two new wells because of White Bear Lake would be paid for with settlement dollars. To me that infers closing well four. But would we ever have that conversation of build six and seven with grand dollars, do them both now? And if we're able to, we get rid of four and we just never see it again?
I, what, what's the advantage? You, you're thinking the advantage of getting rid of four is you're outside of the White Bear Lake purview?
The bane of our existence.
I know, but in my, in my discussions with them, I think it's a fallacy to think that if we take out well four and the lake level continues to drop below ninety-two, they're just gonna expand it. I mean, I've asked that specific question and they're like, well, maybe we'd go to six miles then if the, you know, I mean, that's not, that's a gamble. That's a multimillion-dollar gamble.
That the DNR would change the language of a court order?
They would cha- they, they would go back and expand the radius from five miles to six or seven miles based on the effects that are happening to, and this is all conjecture from one person I'm talking to. It seems like a big risk to put our eggs in that basket.
And I presume Lake Elmo and Woodbury have not had any conversations about that alternative of an air connect. Cause they're in the same boat we are of playing whack-a-mole.
I've not had anything with them recently, but at the time of the Clean Drinking Water Supply Plan, when that was completed and released, they were not on board with that at all. And the, in my conversations with the MPCA privately is this was just a placeholder. They knew they didn't have a solution for us.
Stellar.
And there's no good, I mean, there's not a connection to Woodbury. There'd have to be some significant design.
Oh, yeah.
Just to figure out where you'd get water and where you'd put water if you just, if you went that way.
Thank you.
So uh finishing up the recommendations here, it's, you know, it's proceed, it's proceed with design engineering for well six and a PFAS water treatment plant. Um, you know, we still have a lot of logistics to work out, including what site we're, we're gonna target, what kind of exact area and footprint we need. Um, we, we did verify Stonegate Park is large enough if that's the direction we want to go. Um, but it's really to go now meet with the MPCA, show them our revised water supply plan, tell them we want to proceed with well six and a water treatment plant and get secured funding to keep moving on preliminary and final design and move in that direction. Um, and then um, you know, the, the decision points are really um direction the council might have on sites. The, the direction the council uh might have on um whether we should proceed and include a pilot plant study as, as part of that. Um, otherwise the rest of it's basically just high level and, and moving forward. Details that we'd bring back more details as, as they become uh more refined.
Question on the land acquisition piece, as Stonegate Park is a city park and it would lose the field. I know the drinking water supply plan had land, money set aside for Lake Elmo potentially up to twelve and a half acres specifically for land acquisition. I recall some of that discussion was also for the watershed and also for potential pipes. Had, are you aware, did any other cities, Cottage Grove, Woodbury? I think that'd be it. When they were building their treatment plants, they went back and asked for money when there was to purchase land. Did they ever put a treatment plant on city land and then still ask for money to then reimburse and to buy land elsewhere to make up for the loss of it?
I, I don't know.
Cause I guess I would be interested in, we, we shouldn't be punished and lose a park because that's the most appropriate place. And if there's money set aside in there, I would be very curious to request a grant to uh consider purchase of land to make up for that and obviously to be determined through the process, but I don't think our, our residents should be punished by losing access to a park simply because of this pollution that no one, it's not the fault of anyone here. They set aside two-point-eight million for Lake Elmo for land acquisition.
So they did, uh, I, I do have a couple of quick exhibits here, so this, the, the yellow square shows the rough footprint of the treatment plant sitting on Stonegate Park with a raw water line and a um coming to it from two different wells and a, and a uh distribution line connecting back out. You also need um semi-truck access basically for media replacement and getting in there, so site access and turning radiuses around that building are needed so that you can see how the, the park quit- pretty quickly gets used up to that, to that site. Um, this is a site at the corner of uh tenth street and Inwood, uh south of the water treatment plant. Um, you have a lot more space, but it's developable land. It probably has a lot of value to a developer um in, in that location. Um, but that's the others, there's two sites we're showing on that one, one at the intersection and one a little farther east on tenth street there, just north of the, north of the highway. So those are the, the sites that we were coming up with as being the most to consider. This is the Public Works Facility, but like I said, we ruled that one out um based on the five-mile radius. So that's what I had for that conversation.
Sounds good. Any further questions?
And then I had one last part just to touch on. Um, what I've highlighted here is the neighborhood connections that we've been identified in our capital improvement plan. Um, on the left-hand side, you can see Homestead was programmed for twenty twenty-four. Um, Park, Packard Park, Eden Park and twentieth Street Circle in twenty twenty-five. Tartan Meadows and Klondite in twenty twenty-six and Downs Lake Sunfish Ponds and Forest in twenty twenty-seven. Um, you can see those neighborhoods highlighted on the map. The green area highlights were, are in the approved Clean Water Drinking Supply Plan is being funded a hundred percent by the grants, just like our other projects. Um, the orange um highlighted neighborhoods were neighborhoods that we were fighting for um and, and thinking they should be included, that um they have not yet included in the approved plan, so we would still have to keep applying for those and get approved. But we've kept them in our CIP and to keep them on our radar screen. them on our radar screen. In 2024, we were, I was asked to defer the 2024 improvement project mostly due to everything that was going on with the water limitations, connecting more homes, things like that. I get contacted frequently by the HOA there as to what's the, the plan for that. The next step for connecting any neighborhoods would be, we do, even though they're in the approved clean drinking water supply plan, I do need to apply for the grant. It'll likely be approved because it's in the, the approved plan. But I have to apply for the grant and then I would need to initiate the design services in the next few months in order to get going for 2025 construction. So I'm bringing this up just because this, this plan and the CIP was put on hold last year and then we've had some turnover. So I never got any direction to whether, what, what to do with this is, if it's, if it's going to stay on hold for a little while till we get solutions or get resolution, or whether I should be proceeding with a one-year delay. As I wrote out and read here, was, was my recommendation to just defer everything one year and assume we're moving ahead with Homestead in 2025. So that was the last piece I had for you tonight.
All right.
Would you mind just, oh, sorry, maybe you're going to go to it right there.
Yeah, it's just a, a motion to approve these preliminary findings and recommendations as presented or as may be amended based on comments from the council, just so we can start moving and keep moving on the next steps. And as I mentioned, regardless of what the, the find, whatever it is approved, the, the next steps is to meet with the MPCA, start getting these studies in front of them, tell them what we want to do and get grant amendments for those. And then we'd be coming back to council with those grant agreements.
Could you just one more time, because with the different areas, your, for wells four and five and two and for six and seven, could you just one more time?
Yeah.
In the perfect world, with all the work that you did on this, your, your recommendations?
Right. So, so my recommendations are to move forward with the pressure filters, IX treatment at well two and get going on that design. Do the eight foot diameter vessels that are fifteen feet tall. So we're raising that roof. So it's a 2.4 million dollar project. The goal is to have it online before the summer peak demands in 2025. That's, that's our number one recommendation there. There's some other nuances to that. One of the, one of the nuances is I, I was recommending we don't mess around with trying to get some sort of emergency treatment for 2024 because the cost, the logistics, the potential interference with delivery in this other project are, in my opinion, outweighing the benefit of having something online for the little bit we're going to use the well in June and July. But that would be if the direction from the council is no, we want to, we want to pursue both options. We want to do something else. We can, we can, we, we presented a trailer mount or system. We'll continue to pursue that and see what we can pull together for that. Everything else was just details about that. The, the water modeling is really just adopt the revised water system plan. So in my mind, as your engineer, when we talk about our approved water supply plan, it's now going to be not all wells in the north without treatment. It's now going to be north wells with our, using our existing wells and a south water treatment plant with new wells down there. That's really all that is and.
And with the hope that the southern portion could also become, or win it if it goes that way, river water or surface water.
Yeah, we showed that there's a flood. That's not part of your adopted plan today that I'm asking you. But we did find that there's a good flexibility and we know that we have an option if that comes.
Okay.
That we're not, we're not, we're not making a decision that prohibits that.
Got it.
In the future is probably a better way of saying that. So that's all there is from the water supply plan. And then, and then the south water treatment plant and well is, we need to keep, we need to get more preliminary design money from the Department of Health to keep moving on a water treatment plant and well. The first stages of any well is to find a site and to start putting plans and specs together for a test well and get a contractor out there to do a test well. And then you're doing test pumping, looking for aquifer interference and you're doing sampling of that quality and getting the, what's in those parameters to help inform the design of the treatment. You can be moving forward with site planning and treatment plant design as well, but that, that can only move forward so far till you get that detailed information out of your well. So it's, it's, it's a lot of increment. Like even, even when we've done well four or five, we first did a test well and got that approved. We'd go do that, then we would do the real well and we would do that under a separate contract. Then we do the pump and the pump house over that. So it's, it was still three projects just to do one well that wasn't, didn't even have treatment. So it's kind of that kind of incremental thing that we're, we'd have to be proceeding with. But on this latter one, you know, any direction I can get on site locations and how you might feel about a pilot plant study or not. And I understand that I'm not the expert, you guys aren't the expert on that. It's, it's, there's some pros and cons and I might be able to bring some more information back on that in, in more details if you're interested in that.
Thank you.
Before, we do have somebody that wanted us to, wanted me to read their comments on this. If there aren't any more questions for Jack at this point for public comment. This comes from Ms. Ann Buchek, 2301 Legion Avenue, Lake Elmo, Minnesota, 55042. She states, "On tonight's agenda, the question is being asked if the city council should approve the preliminary findings and recommendations and direct staff to initiate preliminary and final designs for certain improvements to revise water supply infrastructure plan and to apply for applicable three M settlement grant funds. I would hope the council would ask some pertinent questions that have not been addressed in the background information. If you do drill new city wells, what adverse reaction could this cause for Lake Elmo residents who obtain their water from their private wells? Could their wells dry up or become contaminated because of the water being drawn for these new wells? When the city of Woodbury wanted to expand and drill new wells, they had to drill provisional wells to learn what adverse effects the new wells could have on private wells in Afton. There has been a court ruling that no wells be drilled on land within a five mile radius of White Bear Lake because overdevelopment was having a detrimental effect on lake levels. It only seems reasonable. Lake Elmo should be concerned for their own private well citizens. Is it the city prepared to be financially responsible if wells go dry or contaminated after you drill the new city wells? Without having certainty that presents that present day citizens' health, welfare and water supplies are protected, it is not time to drill new wells in order to financially reward developers. I urge you to vote for more studies before any action is taken. Also, if you will be using ion exchange treatment to remove PFAS from the city water, there's a question of where the PFAS will be disposed. If it is put in the sewer system, these chemicals will probably not be removed at the Cottage Grove wastewater treatment plant. If this occurs, the chemicals will then be released into the Mississippi River. This would have an adverse effect on the health of the river." She asks, "My thoughts are recorded in the minutes. If in the future there are problems with private wells or rivers, it will be documented as to the date questions were asked." Thank you, Ms. Buchek. I think that some of those questions have been asked, answered to the degree in which they can be. I'll leave it at that. Now, if there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Dragasic. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Councilmember Holtz. Discussion.
Now we'd like to add that I would support the pilot plant concept. I think the benefit far away the short-term delay in getting the other plant up. I think we'd learn, is our proposed process going to work the way it hoped it? Are there things that we would find in the water and the treatment process that would be beneficial for us in the long term and be more efficient in the three to six months? Well, it's a delay. It's, it, it would have, the benefits would outweigh the delay in my opinion.
I'm, I'm of the mindset that I concur with that, the old adage that ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And that we take care of that on the front end and given the, given that the White Bear Lake plan is due to end in 27, and I mean, any potential action happening regarding surface water coming to our city would be well after that point. I think that, that, that rings true to me. Councilmember Holtz?
I agree with the pilot, I agree with the pilot study. Being able to know the chemistry and to do right matters because this will be used for centuries. It's not, it's not an issue of six months. This is an issue of centuries. For the location of the southern one, I made my cut, my, my thoughts clear earlier. If it's, if the best spot is the city park, that's the best spot. But if we do that, I want to be asking the, the settlement to be reimbursed for losing a city parcel. Personally, I, I, I don't, with well two, I personally want a temporary trailer there now and to start building a northern treatment plant. That's where I, I diverge possibly. Given that our, ours, how last summer went, the feedback that we've heard from residents about water supply, obviously the irrigation changes were not necessarily liked by all, but if this summer is going similar how it is now for precipitation, I don't want to be in a situation where the alarm bells are ringing pretty consistently. We can encourage and try to improve irrigation behaviors all we, all we can here, but at the end of the day, we, we can't force the change. And my concern would be that we're in a position again where the bells are ringing, where we might not be able to have enough water in our, in our hydrants for fire support. So I would, I personally want trailers there and then to focus on getting a treatment plan up there. Cause I, I cannot foresee a situation where wells four and five don't become contaminated. Now, the problem is the MPCA might be saying, well, they're not contaminated now, therefore we can't approve the funding. But they also know how to read a map. So.
I guess with regards to well two, I'm in favor of doing the more permanent fix without the trailers. And, and, and this is a reason why, because as, as I think, if I recall correctly from the presentation, even if we do use the trailers, the would not be in effect until probably August of this year, which essentially leaves us one full month in the high peak, maybe September, but certainly drastically reduces after that point. And to spend, I guess, tax dollars or grant dollars on that doesn't seem to me like the best benefit cost at this time, knowing that the, the rates of PFAS are there, yes, but we've also indicated, been indicated that they're, we, have we, we still haven't heard, right, on the numbers?
They are at legal thresholds currently.
All right. And that we used it on Fridays last year in peak periods for irrigation and it's blended with two well houses that at current state don't have that indication. I, I, you know, I think it's spending time and effort for a trailer for what ostensibly would account for. And, and, you know, the contracts are different for, for two months of, two months of work where we could get the full fix in approval and, and have it in place so that we're assured it's ready for the 2025 full season. Just seems to me to be the better cost benefit for that use. Councilmember Hearn?
I just said clarify. So with the motion, did you have, are you, is the recommendation then for the, putting the plant six on the parkland? Is that what you were leaning towards? Councilmember Dragasic? Sorry, just to confirm. So with the motion, the idea that you had for the location for plant six would be on that parkland rather than the Inwood 10th?
The well.
The well, I'm sorry.
I guess.
Or maybe there wasn't.
There wasn't really in, in that, in that, in my thought process going ahead. I understand we have to make a selection. I'm, I'm not sure that we have enough information to make that right now.
And I mean, I guess just for my two cents here, if it's for direction, I lean towards that 10th Street Inwood. If, if I, if I heard you right, it was more, the other one was the preferred location because it's already city owned, where the other one would require more grant dollars and, and more work to do it. I would hate to take parkland away to do this. So I guess that's just where I would lean on this, but I, you know, I don't know if there's been any other, I didn't want to, I just assumed that for your, from your motion.
Just a clarification, Jack. My understanding was that the well would be on the parkland, but the potential treatment plant site would be north of 10th. Would the, would the well also be north of 10th? Because I would tend to agree with Councilmember Hearn at, at looking at north of 10th, if it's, it's for both of those.
My, my, my thinking is you'll have one well on the same site with the treatment.
Yeah. So I guess I would, I would push for north of 10th.
And then a second, and then the next, you know, the, the treatment plant's going to be designed for two or three wells.
Right.
The additional wells have to be about 2,000 feet away.
Okay.
So you have to find other sites, you know, in radiuses along that. And the site north of 10th Street from an engineering standpoint works out better. And it's not the cost I was more afraid of. It was that there's an uncertainty in acquiring the land.
Sure. Okay. That's a great point. Yeah. Yeah.
And then there's, and then, you know, technically it's not in a musa and we have to bring sewer across. So the logistics of, of navigating that.
Which would, okay.
Okay. But I think in, in hearing you, the efficiencies and the, the betterments for the public good makes sense to have it north of 10th rather than in, in the Stonegate Park, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I, again, I'm always, well, always try to tell my kids not to use those, those words always never. But I, I'm in favor of, of, you know, making sure we, we're doing the best for now and into the future. So it doesn't have to be changed later on at, at probably a much greater cost. So I would, I would tend to agree with Councilmember Hearn on that, that part.
With that additional feedback, I would agree. Do it right the first time. Have it north of 10th. I'm sure we'll find a way.
Make that unanimous.
All right. Any further discussion? I know that Councilmember Holtz and I differed a little bit on the, the trailer. So it would be maybe good to make not, make Jack not hang in limbo as to.
Yeah.
You know?
So I, 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 I understand I had that same thought going through my head of, gosh, you know, I hate, I hated seeing people being frustrated with having any level of it. However, it was below the threshold. So I lean towards not worrying about the trailer, the extra grant dollars towards that. Get the project done so we know we're set to go, like Mayor said, for peak season 2025. I, 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 that's the way I tend to, to look at that as well.
That'd be my preference as well.
All right. So with that, I'll call the question. All is in favor to move to approve the Glen Mary findings and recommendations as presented at the council meeting or as amended by the council and direct staff to initiate preliminary and final designs for improvements as recommended and to apply for the applicable three M settlement grant funding through the MPCA. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Thank you very much for that. I know that was very long, Jack. We appreciate all your explanations and discussion. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you for your patience and your input.
I think the residents should appreciate the, the depth at which this has been studied and, and looked at. So now we go into council reports. Anything, Councilmember Dragasic?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Councilmember Holtz?
The EDA had a meeting before council tonight and we discussed looking at updating the sign ordinances throughout the city and created the work plan for the coming year. And there's, one of the new items on there is the, what we discussed a couple of weeks ago with the moratorium in the Old Village. And so EDA will have a role with that as the council, as with the public as well, as we start to try to update some of the aspects of the city code regarding the Old Village.
This isn't so much a report, as I kind of debated with myself whether to lead the meeting with this or not, but I, I think it should probably go, you know, without saying that the city of Lake Elmo really feels a pain that city of Burnsville has at the loss of their two police officers and the fire paramedic that was on site early Monday morning or early Saturday morning, Sunday morning, if I can get my date right. I had the opportunity to take my son down to Gus Davis yesterday for a, a, a look at the school down in St. Peter. And as we were driving back, I saw a lot of fire vehicles in, I think it's Belle Plaine. I kind of thought, oh, well, that's a sign of solidarity. I wonder what, I didn't really know what was going on at the time. And as we drove further north on 169, I saw this just overabundance of flashing lights coming southbound on 169 and was very pleased to see that many of the communities surrounding Burnsville had their fire departments and their police officers and the state patrol and a tearing, taking the, the, the body of the, the slain medic to his hometown area where he's going to be laid to rest. And seeing the, the fire departments on the bridges above, showing that, that brother, brotherhood that they have. And I just always pray that that never happens in one of our local community, communities as, as you can see the devastation that it brings. So hearts go out to Burnsville and those families that have been affected. Councilmember Hearn?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for saying that. And I just echo that as well. Outside of that, no report.
Mr. Schroder?
To tie into the water discussion, we are working on giving feedback to the Met Council on the 2050 projections for populations. So they, the Met Council studies this issue concerning everything from income levels, demographics, education, race, all the different things that affect birth rates and death rates. They're projecting where we're going. They're asking staff to weigh in on this issue. Not that we are experts in demographic, demographic studies, but we're more looking at permits and homes, zoning, future land use. So we're trying to come up with if we agree or disagree. You know, we're going to be giving, we're putting our thumb on there, but probably not heavily. There's a parks meeting tomorrow at 6:30. 6:30? Yes, tomorrow here. So everybody is invited to that. DNR or the, the city administrator search is started. We've already got six applicants. We'll be putting together a four-color profile and a video concerning the city and starting a real, looking for that. We will be looking at, I believe like on the 19th of March of doing a, a segregation of the initial search down to get some semi-finalists. So I will give a report to the city council and make sure they're aware of that. But if anybody's interested in that job, please reach out to the city. That's it.
No report, thank you.
All right, thanks. Really, Nathan?
Nothing for me.
Nothing to report.
All right. Chief?
I'll just kind of echo what you said. We have some pretty strong connections to the Burnsville Fire Department. So it's been on our minds since Sunday morning and making phone calls and checking in with folks that we know firsthand down there. And it's a difficulty and hopefully we never have to encounter anything like that. We'll continue to train and be prepared, but even in our best, bad things still happen. So I appreciate the, the outpouring of support we've got just from our own community reaching out in the past couple of days and offer our condolences to Burnsville.
Thank you. Director Powers?
Well, nets are up at ID Wood if you want to enjoy the warm weather this week, next week.
I'm sure they'll be in use.
It's February 20th.
Yeah. Any further, Jack?
No report.